Oh, I try to put it up.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City House of Meeting, February 2023, 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting's authority and be joined by the Pledge of Leadership. Our Pledge of Leadership is the new liar of the annual change. Why? Thank you very much. Do a roll call, please. Mr. Ryan. Mayor Alex Robson was at. Here, that was the board of new.
That's them.
You know that?
Yeah.
Hey, he. I'll test him.
Here.
Under you.
Yeah.
Yes, there. Here. All right, I'm sure. Thank you very much. Um, so anyone that would speak with you on the call? Yeah, one person, um, Director Brode.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. I'm Lisa Brode, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, and I just wanted to do a quick downtown update. Uh, for those of you that haven't seen the newsletter or would like a copy, it's available online on our website, and I got prior copies with me this evening, and they're also available in City Hall and the Visitor Association and also in the carousel. If you missed it, Friday night was our first Friday, and there was a chocolate block including chocolate bar canies and cookies and cupcakes and things, but don't mistake it will be another first Friday. And the next one will be a pot of gold, so expect some other fundings for that. Um, Albany Taps and Caps is in the annual event that is back. Uh, it's a fundraiser for furniture share, and it's, uh, four stops in four hours. It's a tap house crawl, so we invite you to that. Uh, we also have a list of lovely places that you can, uh, look for things for your sweetheart for Valentine's Day, and as well as a quick care update about the Wells Fargo Bank Building impacting, uh, parking, uh, things that'll be going on down there. And, uh, wanted to let you know that Albany Civic Theater, um, has a play, um, starting on the 10th, uh, so that's silent. Done. And also on the 10th is a deadline for the Albany Visitors Association photo contest, so $2 to enter unless you're a youth, and then it is free. So please make sure you enter lots of photos, because it wants it, Visitor Association uses to market company and also shares with us, so we appreciate that. Um, two last things, Rotary Crab Feed, Crab Fest is back on February 11th, so on a Saturday, and so go support Rotary and have some crab. And, uh, we published our strategic plan, and I wanted to give a shout out to Kenna Darling, Stephanie Gutierrez, who are our President and Vice President, who, uh, put endless hours into that, as well as Consultant Barry Lash and the Oregon Main Street who supported us through the process financially and uh, emotionally, shall we say, on a strategic plan. We know how those go, and copies of those are available at our office. I'm not going to share this ongoing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director. So just so we know, I hear the ministry has changed, we got one to get done before. Want to know that. Um, so we did receive urgent material from, uh, after Bogay, submitted and emailed to the municipal, and no one assigned to speak virtually. Uh, I believe that Virgil Dan responded to active Bogay virtually during the week. Um, after all, is anybody in audience like to see? Is it anywhere in town? In the end.
Mayor, just for the record, uh, Director Lutte's response was not to actually, but it was to another complaint about Chris.
Thank you. But if there is anyone else who'd like to be speaking off the ground here. During that, next on the agenda is Judge, um, personal court presentation by Court Three. Thanks for visiting, though.
Thank you. Mayor, Councillors, I'd like to thank you for inviting me to provide the annual state of the Albany Municipal Court. I am honored to be here. I'd like to introduce you to September Vigoy, our Courts Advisor, along with Jalisa Piniata in the back, who's the Deputy Court Clerk. They, along with our other court clerks, strive to provide efficient and friendly service to the people who do not want to be in our court. The Albany Municipal Court staff is very professional and a dedicated group of workers. While I invite folks to manage activities that I think reflect why Oregon, in my opinion, and the facts bear out, is experiencing increase in rates of crime, civil disobedience, domestic violence, and suicides. Unfortunately, all of us can see that on a daily, regular basis. First was in Hennessey. In February 2021, Oregon became the first US state to decriminalize non-criminal possession of drugs that are illegal under the Federal Control Act. Oregon is number one in the US in the hallway situations. Oregon is number one in the use of methamphetamine. Oregon is number one in the use of illicit distribution of drugs. Oregon is number seven in the illegal use of cocaine. Oregon ranks number 11 in the illegal use of heroin. Oregon also ranks number one as the highest prevalence of mental illness per capita. Oregon ranks number two in the use of marijuana. Oregon ranks number two in the country for untreated mental illness. Oregon has the highest drug addiction, I'm sorry, not high, number two behind Canada, highest drug addiction per capita in the United States. And Oregon races number 50, number 50 last in providing help for people who are addicted to drugs. In Oregon, 18% of residents 12 years and older have an alcohol and/or drug abuse disorder. In Oregon, 18% of residents need treatment at a facility for alcohol or drug addiction, but they are unable to access the care they need. The state of Oregon spends less than 1% of its total budget on prevention. In Oregon, 27% of adults report suffering from mental illness. That is 6% higher than the national average throughout the US, the US, the United States. Let's not bet specifically here in Albany, where this impacts us. These statistics are borne out by addicted and mentally ill people exhibiting lack of respect for neighbors, lack of respect for local businesses, lack of respect for property of others, lack of respect for law enforcement, and judicial authority. I should be every day. Sheriff and Chief and the sheriff would reiterate that they and their people see it every day as well. Addicted and mentally ill people are disproportionately involved in criminal activity and all types. Things similarly disruptive crimes such as shoplifting, drug trafficking, illegal conduct, theft, and severe magnetic and graphic physical items. Studies show that most mentally ill people also have a drug and/or alcohol addiction. This is known as dual diagnosis for whole terms. As I view these problems, the influence of the judge, I ask myself, what can I, we, do to help our community? Three years ago, with Assistant of Safety Attorney John Kidd, we established the Mental Health Court, which was successfully graduated, which still are successfully graduated 51 people. These graduates have an extremely low criminal recidivism rate. Our Albany Mental Health Court greatly realizes they can't handle health to provide appropriate services. Lincoln Memorial Health has been a great partner with us. Our Albany Mental Health Court shows how intensity and monitored intervention can mend mentally ill individuals. At a local level, we can do the best of the tools we have, which I believe we do with the resource that we possess. But decriminalizing drug possession and use and finding inadequate funding for mental health and drug treatment and prevention programs is a state of Oregon issue. Our elected officials who fail to fulfill those funding programs need to understand how lack of funding can unfortunately negatively impact our communities. If we are concerned about the increase in crime, we need to amend our activities Senator and Governor Act. I'm told that this prevalence of crime does not exist in all things across the country. Therefore, there must be a direct correlation between Oregon being number one in drug abuse and lack of mental health treatment and the prevalence of crime here. Due to COVID, since March 2020, I've been able to send any people to jail regardless of how much you disney. Although that is changing, with the help of Sheriff Duncan, who's present, and Chief Harmon, who's also present, we are clearing a major backlog of warrants and alimony cases and holding and opposing incarceration in Lynn County Jail when it is appropriate. With clearing these cases, along with the fact that the Albany Police Department sworn off its defamation is now full of death, our court is experiencing a damage additional order. I hope you will strongly consider funding an additional .475 FTE to our court, which will allow us to continue to strive to fulfill our mandate by justice and accountability to citizens as well. Thank you. And are there any questions for either me or for September or for the Sheriff or the Chief or the President's Office? Council?
Chief, verification, I just want to make sure I read you properly. Did you say you need .475?
That's what I've been told.
FTE, .475, that's less than one half time. I just want to make sure I got that number right. Thank you.
And she can provide you justification. I can help provide you justification, but she really knows the numbers, and we can tell you that as to why it's needed and some of the services that we are not able to fulfill right now, which we could fulfill if we may. We have a point five oh personnel that we'd like to offer to basically for the FTE.
Any questions that you've made, Ace?
No. Thank you, Councillor.
Uh, Counselor.
Yeah. Yes.
So, yeah, I think, um, thinking back several months ago, the city attorney mentioned some of these obvious issues that are going on because of the laws that have been passed on the table. Uh, and the two folks in the city were creating some work around July 3, looking for those loopholes to put folks back where they need to be. So I don't think you found some of these liberties well to make some of those things happen. So based on what you're saying, you basically cleared the dock of them?
No, not clear the dock. We started to work on climbing the hill, basically.
Okay.
And, and so what we have is we just have a backlog of warrants, and you know, the sheriff and, and the chief can speak well to it. September can speak well to it. What I can tell you is that what's happened for many times and continues to happen, just because we lack space, but we're working on that, is a person would get cited for doing anything, you know, and uh, basically it's misdemeanors, and they would get cited and told to come in and see us, and they wouldn't show up and see us, and and they get a warrant issued for them, and then they get cited again, we give them that warrant saying, please come in and see the jury, don't. And back tonight when I got here, I had to sign some more warrants for a guy who had probably 40 cases pending us, but now we have great cooperation with the sheriff and and the sheriff is now making space, having to clear some other people out and make space for us, and the chief is now a lot of people that we could just simply call, and they will go out and bring the people who they cited out on the streets who've for years been able to thumb their nose at us, and they get cuffed up, and I've been told that it's just going. It's helping the attitude of people out there. And what you back to the chief, where is the chief? Yes. Chief, you want to come up and talk about that, and so, Sheriff, I hate to drag you out, but come on, I'm here, Sheriff.
So it's an organization, um, issues you're working through.
It is.
There's a system of law, but it is.
Yes, yeah, and they've been very helpful, and it's, we're working to clear this backlog of, it's been a backlog, but great, great cooperation.
Do you have my comment from?
Yes, yes, oh, yeah.
So as we, uh, have engaged in, uh, the change in the accountability model for this, uh, one of the individuals who was being taken to court after being picked up on some warrants literally said, I didn't think I ever going to go to jail for this anymore. So that, that's the mindset is out there, and we see that on the useful side and on the charitable side.
Yeah, I, I've been here before, and some of you are newer faces, some of you I've met. Um, I've always had the commitment from back when I was a deputy that if you commit a crime, you go to jail. Um, I believe that it helps stop that cycle of, oh, I can just keep doing it, and I'm not going to stop doing it. There's, there's an interruption in that, even if it's for a day or a few hours or a couple of days, um, I think it helps our community. Uh, it helps the mom and dad on the street that see these crimes or this behavior happening and nothing happens to us, and that's just the, the circumstance we were in for so long with COVID, um, that we are still impacted a little bit just in backlog from, from some of those cases. Uh, as I explained before, for now, I think last time I was here, we had 16 people in there for some type of homicide. Uh, normally we have two to three. I think we're down to 13 now. Um, so we're, and I was told by the DA's office today that we have about six or seven more that are facing trial this year that hopefully, you know, depending on the outcome of the trial, uh, they will get to where they need to be. Um, and so those, we also have a huge mental health problem in our jail that we're, we're facing, uh, and just that component alone um, really restricts the ability to, you know, put someone else in the cell with someone who's, who's, um, you know, having a constant mental health outbreak that could be harmful to, to another person in that cell. Um, but yes, we are open, we, you know, things are, you know, they're still working the kinks out of some of that, um, which is some of those dynamics that we're dealing with, because we are, again, we are seeing way more mental health issues. Uh, I have more people than normal in there for any measure of living crime, which is all your serious assaults, uh, serious perp crimes that are mandatory prison sentences. Um, and I have way more people in there. We don't do the sentences. They're waiting trial. And so those aren't people they want back on, on the street, so there's always been this juggle, and there was even a court of it a little bit. Uh, okay, do we take this person for a, a three-day sentence for disorderly conduct? Or do we keep this person who, you know, is a little bit more serious offender in there? Um, and it's been specifically, uh, an issue on our female side. Um, but, uh, you know, just a week or two ago, we had a great meeting, I think, um, you know, we're committed to helping in any way we can. Uh, we will try to find ways to say yes, and instead of, um, you know, in the past of COVID, we were trying to look for ways to say no, to make sure we had that social distancing and space and all that stuff, so, um, you know, we want to help all of our community partners, uh, to not have the issues that they're having, not have the guy that, the officer or the deputy, because it happens to us as well, says, yeah, give me my ticket, I'm not going to go, I mean, you're not going to do anything. Um, or to the judge who's getting lit in, um, his courtroom over it and feels, you know, kind of powerless to really do anything. Uh, so yeah, we're committed to, to hopefully getting back some semblance of normal, um, with some friends and state has handed down to us.
And I hate to be a doomsayer, and so I want to try to give something that we can look at and and what I'm direct, or what I'm asking you folks, that we try to do the best we can with the resources we have, we really do. And what we really need to do is encourage additional funding, and I know nobody likes the fundings. Everybody, what am I going to do? It's going to cost more than us. But if we want to stop, in my opinion, the prevalence of the petty crime or major crimes and suicides, we have to get people well, both mentally and physically, and that's, unfortunately, you know, drugs have been basically legalized. There's nothing that really stops these people from doing drugs, and when they come in and see me, I can ask them to do treatment, they can, you know, tell me no, and there's nothing that can happen, and we really don't have the sort of resources to get people into mental health, and right now it's difficult to compel somebody to go into mental health. Um, those are things that would need to be changed, not on a local level really, but really from a state side or a federal side, that we can get some additional funding down here. It is from the bottom tier up to the top to help us do better.
So, so thank you very much, Chiefs and Sheriff, September. A question for you, Judge.
Yes.
You gave us the US numbers, and I'll look at your question. For the US numbers, where does Albany brand for those?
Perhaps the chief would know better. I, I, these are the latest numbers I've had, Judge.
Sure.
Okay, all right. I, I don't know where Albany ranks in that. These are just national statistics that I've been, you know, from the national survey, so I don't know where all of your ranks at that. Do you know, Chief?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Counselor, on you, the office is done.
So I continue to hear, hear you talking about, uh, increasing need for mental health, you know, that you're talking in concert with, uh, Lynn County Mental Health. How is that prioritized in Albany Downtown? Is it, is it being, is, are, are costs going to increase or transfer over to that, please, uh, mental health? Because what I continue to hear is that we need more resources in that area, so how are we prioritizing that?
We have this. What we've set up is a, a mental health court here, municipal court, and that started about two years ago, two and a half years ago, I believe. The city doesn't put any money into that, is that correct? So it's not asking the city anything. What, the way that essentially works is somebody will come in and maybe identified by me or my staff on the initial appearance that this person could use a mental health treatment. Now I have to kind of work through to make sure that they're going to be okay and cooperate with that, and, and it's really a great thing. What happens is I ask them if they want to do that. I explain program to them, and and if they say yes, I, they then have to be screened by the city attorney, the defense attorney, and then the Lynn County Mental Health. And then they come back in and see us, we meet once a month. I meet all the clients, they come in and talk, and it's really fun. It's my favorite time being there, because everybody's really supportive of each other. And I tell them as long as they maintain contact with the mental health, do their mental health treatment, and there are some ancillary programs, they may be required to go through, and some are drug alcohol programs as well, as long as they successfully complete that, and I have recommendation from the city attorney, from the defense attorney, as well as Lynn County Mental Health, they will eventually graduate from that program, we give them a certificate, everybody cheers them on, and again, considerations are raised very low on that. What happens is, these are normally usually petty crimes, they may be disorderly conduct, harassment, uh, but are really an indication of the mental health problems that they've had, maybe somebody out on the streets causing problems. And our goal is just to try to focus them back in. Now, some of these people I've seen, I've represented some of these people over the last 35 years when I was doing that at work, and they never got any treatment, and they were out there continuing to go through, and I can think of a couple of them now who've gone to this mental health court, and they graduated and just turned around night and day, and they are very people now. They're doing very, very well. So the answer to the question is not, mental health court is not asking the city anything, I think the funding, the, the county, I believe, is able to obtain some funding to do this, and they're now going out for some additional grants as we resolve and see how long this is going.
Yeah, my, my question wasn't specifically how the city is funding that. I, my question was how is lame driving, mental health being part of the weekly budget?
I, I can't speak to the budget. I'm not the commissioners for, for Lynn County Mental Health, and I'm not Lynn County Mental Health. I can tell you just in conversations with them, with all of them, that it, it is a topic. Uh, it is also, um, a lot of their funding, uh, does come from state grants and things like that. Uh, some of the problems they've had over the last year in particular have been just like everybody else that's been staffing. Uh, and those numbers are coming up, and I hope that they maintain, you know, that path. Um, but yeah, I would probably, if you want to know specifically about the budget itself, I would contact Lynn County.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. There were well compensated, uh, reports in state Oregon earlier this week about the money that was cited on the marijuana tax money that has been set aside some of the major retainers, 110 for treatment. Um, and they, the report said that 60,000 people in Oregon, including every county in the city of Oregon, have been successfully treated or directly been treated or on therapy, lack of treatment. That doesn't match the, the information that we've been hearing here, so I want to know if you have any information about that.
Counselor, I said, who's someone again? Uh, initially, 110 came through and, and placed the jurisdiction on those issues before our municipal court. And I think during municipal court, depending, looking back in September, we had 60 or 70, how many cases of that came through perhaps of the 110, like PCS charges, roughly? But zero. We, out of roughly 70 cases that came cited in front of us, zero new treatment. I think two said that they would pay the hundred dollars and wave out of the treatment. The great majority of them just did not show up in the court. And then jurisdiction was changed from this court over to Lynn County Circuit Court, or over to the circuit, so it's no longer in our court. And now that, those 60 cases, that would probably be four month period, five month period.
I find this really skeptical. I heard that.
So I wish to know. I, I do know that, um, I think it was probably about this time last year, maybe six months ago, there was another report by the state, uh, and it got a lot of, um, press attention, and these were the numbers directly from the state that .85% of people that were cited for number 110 crime or violations, um.
Wait, you mean by that's less than 1%?
Less than 1%, uh, actually participated in any kind of treatment. And so, and I, if I remember the number right, it was something like 19,000 people had been cited across the state at that time, if I, if I have my numbers correct. Um, I can tell you just from talking to our folks, I'm a huge proponent of we will still do everything that we can, um, even if it's just the violation, we cited for the violation, uh, but I can tell you that the amount of work, and this is true probably throughout the state, that is involved in that one citation is so much more than any other citation that we give. Uh, I would not be surprised if police officers across the state are just saying it's just not worth it. Um, it's not worth me spending, you know, two or three hours writing a report, entering drugs into evidence for something that there are no consequences for, because they don't even have to comply with treatment. They only have to make a phone call. Thank you.
Counselor.
I'm trying to gather my thoughts after the last, uh, David, um, Judge Reed, I have, so I always appreciate when folks, um, let me know how I can do a little bit better, and something that stuck out when we were speaking, um, was I just want to suggest a brief frame. When you, um, said these people, say, folks with addictions, we are a community that have addictions. You know, I know that we have and have in Albany, um, some little area, uh, short treatment programs and drug counseling programs. Um, I'd love to see how we can work with maybe some of our private, private partners here in Albany, um, and we listen follow up. I just think that there's, there's a little more that we can be doing, um, to support our community, whereas I'm not sure anyone here has ever, um, had a loved one that has an addiction. Um, it's when, I know that in sight and only one of the high folks thought in talking treatment, but, um, unfortunately, it is an addiction, it's a illness, and folks need to be ready, they need to be ready to accept that, that treatment, um, which is, which is really unfortunate, and to do the best we can to, you know, be supportive, um, to work out, um, at the law for the workhouse at, um, in, in, uh, court and, uh, um, hopefully it is a better, uh, or some place to, to all folks, uh, be on hold.
Mm-hmm. I think that was the intent behind 110. I just don't know if it's occurring yet.
I think all of us can stay calm. I was happy to see. Um, I was happy to see how the partner holds, probably because five, ten years, we can see, uh. Office more either.
To the council.
Oh, this economy, um, doesn't matter how good a program is, if people have an option. You know, I know you can't force people. It's such a messy situation. We can't force them, okay? And so you have these programs and less than one percent would like to even give a shot. Um, it's, it's just really sad because the reality is that you're living with lawlessness. That you have what you said, I'm only going to share it for, maybe it was, uh, the chief saying, what's the point? Why should I even file these papers when there's no accountability, there's no, uh. No consequence for the action. So I don't know. That, to me, a better approach might be, or at least one that deserves attention is change the law. You know, let's vote again. We, we, we're living with the fallout from a few years ago. Maybe we run past the people again and they say, you know, it's not worth it. It's not worth it, given that how we tried it. And this tiny, tiny percentage of people are willing to take an effort. Cause they're not ready. I'm not, I'm not asking this person or anyone, but like, okay, we did this, we tried this, we're living with the fallout, maybe we should, again, for this, we'll vote. Maybe we should change the law. Maybe we should make it so there are consequences. Because what I can see from human nature is consequences are a detriment. You know, there's, it's what you've already said, all of you that have spoken that to some degree. That when people know there's going to be a consequence, they tend to think about what they're going to do before they do it. Maybe they don't want to do that. Maybe like the person who said, I never thought I'd get involved in it ever again. Maybe when they know they would get involved, maybe they say, it's not worth it to do this thing. I don't know. So, um, I can just say, and I, I totally appreciate the stance of we need to try and get these people help. Um, I was, I do have family members that had addiction issues. I have, uh, actually a brother-in-law who actually passed away from his, an overdose. Uh, and so, but I also was, uh, for four years a narcotics detective. And as narcotics detective, you talk to a lot of these addicted people, um, in the nature of what you do, uh, informants or whatever it is. And you hear a lot of their stories, but you also hear from them, and we've heard from people even after measure one ten. Who, they know that unless there is something that's going to put a stop to their actions, they're not going to stop. I agree that people have to be in the right place and, and want to do that treatment. But sometimes it's that consequence, that trip to jail that makes them think that, okay, I need to do something different. And now I'm ready. And I know from talking to parole probation and things like that, where we had a system in place. For over four hundred people in our, in our county, that they were at least walked to down that line and given that encouragement. Uh, because they were doing drug cases then. That's four hundred less people that they have on that case load to try and help them with those problems. My husband's actually a retired probation officer and I know how many people he actually helped get on the right path. It wasn't all about, you know, um, you know, there wasn't a carrot, not just the stick. And without having all of that structure in place for people. Uh, I think we will see less and less people having those opportunities. There are studies showing that our youth are already increasingly using marijuana and drug and harbor drugs now. Since it has been, you know, in essence legalized. Um, and you know, there's all kinds of other studies of what it does to youth, but that concerns me. The message that we're sending to our young folks of what is okay and what has consequences and what doesn't, that concerns me.
Good. So. Coming from being the son of a retired prosecutor. I was exposed to drug addiction early on in my life and, you know, we've been going somewhere, she had a problem with it. Adult, arresting a lot of their states and why they're doing something, just that and that. So two men in my life, I'm Orange, Miami, a football player, very happy, very suited, college college footballers. I'm a college, they got pretty good in football, we had a business degree. And buddy is a basketball and father and hey, try this. Good eye. Twelve years later, I was here already, a hobby in the class, uh, down in the gay area. And I stopped it, come with the train, but man, they only off track, eighty, eighty, they end up where I was, just kept him to school. And this big black dude, Afro, trash, uh, tore a bloody mortal, throws mud on my ship. I'm putting my position with my, my heart. So I didn't know, I didn't call the authorities, I called the police. Well, Tom came in, I say, when there's two wives, we're going to the property. This master, this comes to the Indian, this is my challenge, the one in the Bay Area, Paradise. And he was there for four years. He had one from the air. And he's waiting at long, and he's just waiting, and he's moving, and he was a kind of a bachelor. And, um, he called, he said, I'm getting married. So we had to come and help me with this, he is supportive of this. He got married and he married one with a child. And he has ownership and it's absolutely providing over the average age is the measure. Last word to twenty sixteen. When I was four, I was all they were in, my little brother, twenty nineteen ninety-four. I was in a court, other than the case, this, uh, uh, here, calling the things are with him. And I was at sea, came home, I started looking for a long, I was getting one. And, um, he bought it a couple months prior. So nineteen ninety-four, he goes here, go back and forth, probably twelve times, tried identifying a lot of that. Two thousand sixteen, I had a call on August first, eight, nine, ten. I'm very interested in this process. But before then, then I went back, went on my journey to the, I said, that's, I, I, I didn't teach him. He didn't show up, and I'm very much. Two thousand eight, my special path away. And then I had to go to the town, and they just spent, most of us, not, uh, they're not good enough. But no more, please also, two thousand twelve, when I read the best path with, send in, whether or not. Two thousand fourteen, when I died, when I'm dead, my, change out to the delta, we're done. Two thousand sixteen, they found him in the center. Is that why I could divorce him? Cause he wasn't aware of around me, he was, she was, she was a nurse in the corner. She called me, and we, we found him, he's here. And so when I go down, with the, um, I'm going to have to check, and then, and he was not there. Because we have been, all of this charged, uh, they said, they're pretty much, they have to be there. But in the month, I didn't see him, it's, it's a crime. You got to, so I mean, I don't know. I don't know, the location, the moment issue. I'm shocked in the way organized it to the thing, it's okay, we're finally reporting them. This could be, I'm worried you're not ashamed of me. Unfortunately, I'm going to leave, I will get, you know, your knee, it's twenty twenty-one, I'm dead. I said, I already were going to the end of the, uh. And, and all we know, it was transitioned for me. And it was, it was like, I'm gonna find it, so if you have no money, any coordination, you have to, also, then. That woman, I will be there for her, her character, my, my, she, she did that. Was probably his parent when he was, he had, he had a problem. We didn't have, our, our, she's your life, she's your, your years, don't be, please. And, and totally appreciate that, though, we managed to win, applaud your effort, we will go for it. And then for a while, I'm not gonna say it. Over the long, I, that I learned going out to the legislature, so I'm going to be here, here. And we'll see that, over two, we will find out, um, we will live by the table. Then the number, oh, it is twenty-nine, we have to publish, so make this, uh. Yes, your comments.
Thank you, sir, counsel.
Next on the agenda. Anybody's work? I need five more. Be back with us, if we're in time. Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience. Um. So it's been a distressing time. I'm going to, next on the agenda is approval agreement, item five. I'm going to support the chief, the bar chief, and the chief. Um, so Chief Harden, please, item B is between, I'm getting point APB and Louisville Police Department. Chief Harden, page ten, two thousand eight, your packet.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Campbell. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, for those who have been on that for a while, that's what I'm most specifically identifiable for the agreement you have with Oregon State University. The reason we're putting on a nice for the university Oregon is on, uh, qualifications over the last year. So they have relied on us for resources. This agreement allows, uh, a preset, uh, financial agreement and mechanism to get remission for activities or, like, publicity. Sort of the duty of the Oregon for the specialists and having any of that, and, and identical to, to you or then.
Any questions, counsel?
So are we prioritizing, um, most of you over?
Uh, well, I, I have to, she's so, so. I'm, uh, people a lot of, uh, she, uh, she's sort of approximately in a shop and those. Uh, but we're happy for, uh, those ducks on occasion.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I thank you for that. Uh, can you look at, have you got any questions?
Well, as a member of the University of Oregon School General, I, I believe, uh, approval of this, uh.
I'm holding your second. Uh, so all those members that are, those opposed, they know, um, Chief, hold your hand.
Yes, thank you for letting me.
Next on the agenda, uh, item A, fire protection agreement, uh, our situation moved page three to nine, your packet.
All right, good evening, Mayor Council and staff. Uh, we are seeking to renew our existing contracts with the three rural fire districts that's real this. Uh, let's see, the three are, as you know, Albany Rural Fire Protection District, North Albany Rural Fire Protection District. And Palestine Rural Fire Protection District in full. All three contracts equate to about one point five million dollars to make tribute to the city for services. Uh, in the contract we're proposing, keeping the tax rate the same at two dollars per thousand. Uh, the average of similar fire districts in Linnabette County is a dollar eighty-nine per thousand. So we're in the ballpark of the average. Uh, let's see here, but you know, despite keeping the rate the same, when they, our bill from the department is actually, it increases based on what their assessed value does. So even though, you know, you might see two dollars to say a year after year. Their evaluation of their districts grown about four percent a year. So our bill to them is increased about four percentage year. Lastly, my notes, one difference, uh, in between the three contracts. Uh, two of the rural fire districts are contributing additional funding to the department. Uh, North Albany Rural is going to contribute to, or actually will pay to replace the HVAC unit, station fourteen, which is in North Albany. The other, uh, Palestine Rural Fire Protection District is, uh, paying five thousand dollars to start to replace the treadmill. At a station that serves them, which is station fourteen. Uh, Albany Rural, we didn't ask, uh, them to contribute anything additional. Because over the last ten years, they already contributed like seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the department. They paid for half of our truck company in two thousand thirteen. They paid two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen to replace our boat and purchase a new watercraft. So they're very, very generous with us. When they see a need in our department, they frequently step up. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Also, any questions? Counselor Montague.
So that four percent increase, your anticipated four percent increase, how is that in line with your increase, your anticipated increased cost?
Yeah, so how it works, even though we have a contract with the rural fire districts, that money goes into the general funds. So the big pot of stew that revenue is going to. Uh, the four percent, uh, is. Well, for this next finding, we'll get into the budgetary process, our wages is, uh, will increase at about three percent. Over the length of the contract that we have with the Barbie unit. But healthcare costs, as you know, or likely know, or you know, ten, potentially ten, fifteen percent, you really never know. So, um. We're going to find out here for the next, you know, few months as we get some of those numbers in. So I cannot sit up here and say I can guarantee you that that four percent increase covers all our additional costs. But what I can say though, out of the rural fire districts, the three, along with the city of Melkersburg. Uh, that equates to about fourteen percent of our overall budget. Um, but the demand on our services is only about eight percent. So, you know, I know that's not a complete equal, you know, demand for service versus what we charge. Because you get more than just, uh, we're there to, uh, we're an insurance policy. Um, so, um. It's, you know, we're, we're going to find out and it's a five-year contract. So, you know, speculating in the future what our costs are going to be is difficult, difficult to do.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that if we do not increase the rate. And, you know, if our costs increase indefinitely and the tax, you know, all the new asset or whatever, how do we say that?
Sure, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, counsel. Got any questions, you good?
Yep.
And then, counsel, have any questions or comments? So there's no resolution on this theater. So we just both sit through and move on, or either way. I think you're approving the agreement. So, yes, you can do it with a firm vote, okay, sort of.
I would not approve on the three agreements.
Okay, sorry, move the motion and then the second to approve our three agreements. All those who ever say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they know.
Thank you.
And Louise.
Next on, next, Louise. Next on the agenda is the adoption of consent calendar. Does any counsel have any concerns?
This one, uh, I don't see one. I think there's a typo. I think it says, um, should be more new company as opposed to agents, my agent.
Can we fix that? It's, it's just a typo, you know, it's, I don't, I don't, there's a typo. Good, thank you. So good motion, move to approve the consent calendar.
Aye.
Add motion and the second, all those who ever say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they know. Thank you very much, counsel. Most asking by the room. Next up is. Okay, we're here. Moving along pretty well. Staff reports, addition of contract agreement, special position, director, finance director, Gator, on page thirty of your packet. She'll be remanded from her office, but she's not feeling too well. And we'll totally pay away from it, so I'll leave her. Counselor, Director.
Good evening. Um, tonight we're asking counsel to approve a new position for us in finance. Um, currently we have one person who handles contracts across all city departments and there's, she needs some help. Uh, we had kind of talked about this a little bit during our presentations, uh, the number of contracts, agreements. Uh, just even grant funding that we're receiving is increasing, um, drastically in the last few years. And Diane is. And Diane is incredibly knowledgeable and has a ton of experience, but again, she needs some help. So we're just asking uh, for another position that will assist her. Uh, it also really fits in well with our succession planning. And so, uh, again, you know, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. But we would just like to get this position added uh, as of March first.
Council.
I have all the questions today. Is this the, the grant writing position?
No, this isn't the grant writing position. This is a contract administration. And I'm sorry if I'm cutting anybody off. The sound coming from the meeting is really hard to hear online, so just, you know, tell me to shut up if you need to. Um, no, this is, this is a grants, a contracting and procurement uh, specialist position.
Okay, thank you.
Council, for also.
Just a quick question. Did I see that there's funding available for both of these requests? I think I saw that. I'm gonna make sure. Yeah?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Uh, I was just double checking. I, I think I saw that there's funding available for both of these requests.
There is funding, yeah, for the, for the rest of the Biennium, we have funding available for it, and then it'll just become the next uh, part of the next budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, Council. Excellent. Um, so on the first part of that position, contracted procurement specialist, uh, does anyone have a motion?
Will we approve the formation position?
Yeah, motion is that all those who can say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they know. Thank you, Director. And come back up, Director, what's she have? Oh, right there, okay. There's, part of item B is reclassification of purchasing coordinator position to contracting and recurring officer, Danny Jager, page three, monitor packet.
I think you confirm the request for addition purchasing coordinator position to contracting and procurement officer.
Definitely.
All those who can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You'll say aye when you want.
Awesome. That, that beautiful.
This is laughing, I'm sorry.
The other people vote, do you vote?
I do vote. It's a constant on and on.
Yes, uh, please motion pass it. Thank you, Director. And who's next? Hope you're still there. Requesting increase full-time FTE, full-time employee for one court per position, uh, point four five, that I was talking about earlier. Uh, Derek Jager, I think the judge, you made his case for him.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those who can say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Next salary adjustments, reclassification for all the works admin positions, with Director Bailey, page thirty-three, thirty-four, your packet.
Hello, good evening, Council. Um, so this item has three parts which are interrelated, and I'll provide a little bit of background because um, sometimes it's hard to capture them all. So in all the works, we now recruit that is administrative contracting positions. There are family positions that um, are related to each other. In two thousand eighteen, we took um, an administrative assistant one position. So the positions go clerk three, administrative assistant, administrative assistant one, contracting assistant, contracting coordinator, and then supervisor. So they're all sort of stacked. Um, in two thousand eighteen, we took the AA one position and reclassified a work group contracting assistant. Position replaced it at a higher pay grade than the AA one degree, and appropriate gap. Between those positions and acknowledging the, the additional experience and certification that the contracting assistant needed. Shortly thereafter, in two eighteen, the city's classification and compensation study came out. And it improved that AA one positions needed to be either where they were being undercompensated. So we did that, we, the city, did that, um, didn't look at the impact on the contracting assistant, so switched the two of them together inadvertently. And they saved by that as well time. So this um, further request is to adjust the salary placement of the contracting, contracting assistant to move it from its current salary position. Uh, to A one divided, we'll create that appropriate gap that should have been done years ago. When you do that, and the next, this higher position, the contracting coordinator now is too close to the contracting assistant, so you have the, the contracting coordinator position up higher. So we're asking to move that position from A one to not A one forty-five. And then when we started looking at this, I asked um, supervisor, I was looking at her position because. I have known for a long time that for some reason, the administrative supervisor in all the works. Has been compensated significantly lower than other supervisors in all the works. I don't really know the history of it. I have suspicions about my name. Was none, but it's not appropriate, so that position has. An equivalent responsibility to other all the work supervisors and should be placed at the same level. So the third requirement, um, reclassify the supervisor position uh, to the equivalent sitting of the other all the work supervisors. Acknowledging that it has an important role. That group is responsible for, um, a lot of things. Um, but importantly, contracting uh, within all the works. The all the works is further or responsible for A lot of the contracts that the city. It's usually, then we have staff who specialize in, you know, taking over construction contracts and um. Professional services for um, what consulting engineers that only, pretty much only we use. And this group works really closely with uh, the finance group that, for example, was the chief Diane. And so their work is coordinating, but there's a lot of harmony and a lot of money that's spent on contracting, so. This group makes sure that they're fitting that, uh, those quality funds appropriately, following the current laws and rules and um, paying some of the work of the finance to do that. So, and there is adequate funding, um, as the new officers vote to finish the Biennium and then also the future years. These positions are paid for across all the works funds, so that helps spread the load. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director, Council. Let's not get, um, council on the first again. You're brilliant. I love that. Interesting. You mean? Wow.
Okay.
So do I have a motion?
I would move to the uh, salary adjustments and reclassifications as you classified, so we push it.
Also, I can learn.
I have motion and say all those who can say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they know. Hold on.
Thank you, Donald.
You're welcome, aren't you?
Yes.
There you go. Um, so next on the agenda is this from the council. I will start on that end and go.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, Council.
A few things.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, first. Wanted to, um, add a call for a decision. Um, I wanted to bring up the uh, foster barns, burger chicken facility that is proposed to go in the SIO. Um, they're planning on uh, raising and processing about four and a half million bars of chicken this year. Um, I'm bringing this up because this facility is situated um, right next to uh, Rivers and Grace museum water system, which is where we deal water. Um, I know there is a moratorium bill, um, to stop the execution, um, and it was, it's, it's immediate. Two seven, um, I say that we should support it. Well, um, Jackler, a concern, just to make sure there is environmental. Um, yeah, she started saying rockaway and members in here all day. Um, which kind of helped in our community. Um. Should have lowered the next seven to twenty-two. So, and I've heard from multiple members of our community, um, regarding the uh, plant insurance rule. Um, I wanted to request some clarification on these things, so I wanted to know. Um, what percentage of trees are moving or are diseased or are, or are at risk of disease? Um, or are they removed for other reasons? And then, um. I'm trying to uh, condense it all. With any concern ever uh, from all of the. Regarding that there's been a lot to know for tree, tree replacement. Um, concerned for our replanting, uh, replacing trees truly are the one either in quantity or maturity. Um, a lot of folks have been uh, concerned about our tree candy. Um, I've also had a very concerned call, someone uh, worried that we're going to do our listures of grasshoppers, which I think. We will not. And we're at for trees, they're the ones that smell terrible. They look beautiful. They, they look, they're gorgeous, but they smell like um, bad breath. Um, they're very popular in the um, in trees, but openly losing them. Um, I've also heard um, requests to incorporate tree trees in our own defense. Um, to allow baby numbers or bladers um, harvest. Um, third, I wanted to suggest that um, we try again to be leading county commissioners in the near future. These students are at all reasons, um. One, we need a working relationship. Um, Albany has the largest operation in Lindy County. Um, they look. It's unfortunate for the city council and the commissioners in that for several years. But in addition, after our last meeting with the, the planning commission, um. Wish, wish for additional operations around mental health. Um. And the article of motion that in the Democrat held, I, I learned that Lindy County's actually drafted for a two-person crisis response team. Um, for their bill, Monday to Friday, that they're gearing up for two persons or throughout county. Um, I had no idea about this, so I don't think.
This is, this is now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I feel that if we have a better working relationship with our county officials, that we would, you know, be more, in more lockstep um, on important. Uh, resources that can benefit um, the community or Albany. You know, that's all my, all I is.
Well, I agree with that, my friend.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilman Smith.
Well, I think that that's the one. I have that many positions.
Councilor, on you.
Um, Asko had a constituent uh, reached out after reading the Democrat Herald, um. Um, article about the meetings of the planning commission and surprises to happen. Um, encouraged uh, that, that uh, she would like to see uh, a program like Cahu's come to Albany, uh, which was in the article. So I also think that's a great idea, and I'm glad to, to Cora, tomorrow. That is all I have.
Of the way. Uh, I have heard from multiple constituents, um, regarding the proposed removal of the trees. Uh, of the waterfront project, and they are all of those saying, can we please take the time to reconsider? Some of them are calling this aggressiveness and appalling, and um, I'm just regretting my people, okay? Um, I think that, you know, it's never too late to take a step back. I think that as Councilor Newton mentioned, I want to know how many trees are sick to the point of death, you know, and what is, what is ready to fall over? If, if there are trees that we have to take out, that's one thing, but I also think that the public deserves a little more of an opportunity to be aware of this. Because I had no idea, and we've been talking waterfront for two years, uh, since I've been on the council, and I had no idea that part of the project would entail the removal of these old trees. I don't know why that wasn't thought to our attention, but it certainly is having an impact on the community, and I'm, I'm just, I don't like to be shocked and surprised about things like this. To me, it seems like a good time to mention that that might be part of the plan would be during the kind of longer talking with the people who are presenting their plans. There, there was, to my recall, no mention of, by the way, in order to put this in, we're gonna have to take out our percentage of the trees. If we even mentioned it, that would be helpful, so for future reference and future planning. For, um, you know, be responsible with the people that we represent, I think that. The folks can plan these things, they should consider that, and, and let's talk about it in advance most time, and not have people be taken off guard. By surprise, in shock, having no idea, and that includes the council in there, that's, I just think we should have. Things like that, that people feel so strongly about, especially when you are a tree city in America, and you've been one for decades. There was like a, a little, somebody missed something, I, I, you know, and I don't mean any disrespect to anyone, I'm just saying for future reference, that's something to consider. Because people do feel strongly, I feel strongly about trees, you know? Um, so I just, um, I would like to submit to you that perhaps before we. We make a whole lot of tree felling, which is due in the next few weeks. Are there any trees that can be saved? Can, you know, do we have any recourse here? And, and let's not just say, well, it's already in place, it's already been planned, so we have to go ahead. Well, I have a lot of constituents saying, please don't do this, or please at least let's look and see if there are some trees that don't need to be felled. So that's all I'm asking, on behalf of my constituents, can we please take a look at this situation and see if there are some trees that don't have to be removed? Can we please, and for future reference also, not let this happen again, where some of this is, is part of the plan, but we didn't know any of that. I think that, as the council, you need to know this, Camara, according to my constituents.
I did.
Okay, well, I just hope to even know what we did on there, so that's.
I had no idea that the art was coming out, because typically, somebody that are, uh, city, if you're starting to instill your promise, that is mine.
But you did talk about the.
I knew that I knew about trees being removed, because part of the whole thing, since I own that for four years, is we're gonna take out one day, and then put it back a day. I mean, that means some trees are not there enough daily, and some are in a way progress. And so I told a person today, they called me upset, granted about the trees that they're taking out, I said, where do you live? They told me that, that's my payroll, walk out to the miller's tree farm, and ask yourself what was there a hundred years ago. And thank you very much, the phone. Progress is going to, we're gonna replant trees that are related to our environment. But because we don't like them taken out, doesn't mean it's a wrong thing to do, or the means for our society. The whole city is going to benefit from the redevelopment environment. New trees going, when they're gonna put it back for three thousand plants? I'm okay with it, because we have to think about this, that's why I do not for us. It's one of those first words I talk to every week, and say, when you come back with your family, visit Grandpa, Grandpa, walk into the waterfront, because you're doing it for the earth. And those trees, if they're not dead, they'll appreciate what they see. So I'm okay with being criticized for taking those trees out. Progress has to move forward. If you walk, you go back five hundred years, and that's the new American, this is your mountain, bring them forward, they'll all burn out. Change titles, and I accept it. If anybody goes into an enterprise with a big old crony like this, trees go away, streets go away, buildings come down, for the future of the city, I think it's a good call.
Well, I just wanted.
I appreciate that this is.
Yeah, I, I, you know, my constituents and I fully same way, that I don't want to see a bunch of trees go and put a few plants in. I'd like some trees, but that's.
We're not going to treat them, but they are true. Thank you. And for your, so when I.
Entirely, I have another situation that was brought to me, it's my constituent, and she asked me, um. She just wanted to know if the, and she called it the park ranger, and I don't know if that's the term, but we have.
That's correct.
There's a park ranger, okay, so she just wanted, uh, she asked to know with the park ranger position, I believe, I don't still, but is her currently working now, or are you waiting till summer and I was? Can I get an update on that?
They're currently working. It's a park services officer, and yes, they're currently working.
Okay, and is it, um, I can't remember if it was like super park time, or to what degree are they in the park?
It was a full-time position, uh, there must be, um. Well, she, but she has had the, and I believe she's a full-time position, and I don't know if, what they spend, they spend. All of their time in the park, I'm sure it's not all of their time, because they've got other duties as well. What is the, what is the underlying question?
Yeah, the question was, is that person currently.
On the job.
On the job, yes, because there was a delay.
There was, there was a delay.
So thank you for asking that question. So thank you for asking that question. There was one more part, but I have to wait to get more information before I can, that's. See, I'll show you. Wanted to, I responded to at least one person, three regarding questions about tree removal, can, whatever comments that we received from other constituents, and I wanted to bring up a couple of things that were in the letter that we received under this term of public this evening. One was, um, an assumption that the report public input on waterfront project occurred during COVID. And only during COVID, that's not the case, but public comment period began as early as twenty eighteen, within person live, um, meetings at the former State Center and Eltern, and those have continued through online surveys and there's been, there's been continual opportunity for public comment. I also wanted to point out that if you look on the website of the waterfront dot net, you will see thematic drawings of the changes that are proposed to Montevideo. And you will notice that, um, a considerable amount of the property there has trees on them. Um, in every one of the drawings, there are trees there. Um, I was reminded when this came out and we, as has been reported, that there were an art risk hand design team for the waterfront, check the value, weighed two hundred and seventy six tree, I believe it was sold three hundred and sixty, somewhere like that.
I have some more data on that, I can.
Okay, good. Um, but living anyway, that they said not all the trees that are coming down, it will, it will not be a source for tree removal. Uh, in the early nineteen eighties, uh, there was a, a concern about cottonwoods, generally, um, waterlogged cottonwoods falling, breaking, um, causing havoc, uh, in Grand Park. And that would require the removal of the three hundred trees in Grand Park. It sounded like it was not normal. If you go to Grand now, you wouldn't know that there had ever been three hundred more trees there. Uh, well, it, it happens. Trees have to be removed sometimes, they've been in the plans all along for this project, and I think the people will be really pleased with the result. Thanks.
So Peter, thank you, Mayor, in addition to that three hundred that you just mentioned comes to know back when, uh, Corvallis Tree did their waterfront, one hundred and thirty seven trees were removed in the course of improving that waterfront, and no one, certainly no one today would consider that an untruly needed environment. I don't know if Council's got a chance to look at what we mentioned you a day or two ago, including related to the K E Z I story, okay, there was a lot of information in there as well, and who knows, the state's in Del Castro. It is no accident that Albany has been a tree city for twenty eight years. That's because of the city's dedication to the vast status and staff, we have very, worked very hard, I mean, painted over time, we have an urban forestry program. And taking care of this forest, but far beyond individual trees. So individual trees, although they generally live longer than the humans who get to know them and love them, they do have lifespans, but new trees come and they replace old one. Tree removal is a natural part of the management of the urban forestry program. And so is replanting. Three days, some trees, some needs, some to give to destroy infrastructure. And during our planning for any project that concerns around maintenance and ongoing cost, it's important that that project's designed and indicated for water flow. New plantings, the new plantings of over three thousand that we're putting are not expected to incur any additional ongoing costs compared to current. In this twenty-five page arbitrary report, which were done as a part of the waterfront project, there's a complete inventory, a vegetable of trees, eight hundred and seventy three were inventoried. Two hundred and seventy six of them, or thirty-two percent are in the area that we watch. One hundred and eighty-five of those will be retained. And eighty-four will be removed, that's less than ten percent. Nine of those are ed trinsin. And twenty-one of them are invasive, and the rest are diseased, or they may be interfering with utilities or infrastructure. The bottom line is that we, we love our tree candy and we're committed to it. The measure of that commitment is in the repeated, year after year, care of the urban forest as a whole. The health of the forest for future generations and indeed help the community for future generations depends on our care of that forest today. We'll be removing eighty-four trees and replanting seventy-three. So, uh, again, when you listen to those numbers and you, you hear that less than ten percent are being removed, I think, uh, we can't lose sight of the forest with the trees. And if anybody has any concerns or questions, I would urge them to contact me or Matt Ariton, or State Development Capital Engineer, or Donkey, uh, Adams, who, uh, working on the water and the project. And with that, I'll, uh, ask if I can answer any question, any further question.
When I say. I'm turning my life up, thank you for the information, that helps me, that's more than I have ever known on that topic. Thank you.
Well, we, and we can provide you with a copy that you saw, Mayor, yes, uh, we'll provide you that.
So maybe that when we have situations arise, that it may potentially be explosive or a very volatile situation. Give us the information before it is to the press, because it will help us base more in our decisions, what did actually happen? Does that make sense?
Perfect, yes.
Well, I'm going to do my best to, anybody else, I'll give the announcement. Um, I want to say that we should all get back to Maryland's, um, right off after her thirty, forty-third year tomorrow. We can get it possible. Um, I have told Wind County, um, Wind County, where the commissioners, you know, telling me that I have been at a place with them, I have great fruition individually, they reduce me.
Sir, you should.
I'm all right. So I have spent hours with each one, Mr. Springer, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Michaels. And I've asked Peter to reach out to them instead of the meeting, and we're willing to do that, as they are council document that happened. Um, they'll always point it down to, they're, they're not comfortable with it, but it's filming, they don't know that we want to do something about. So Peter is hoping, uh, their city, their, their county commissioner there, who's the back, they're in light. And is for some reason, it is.
Well, we, we still have, we're still working on it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, uh, it's, it's been a long time, but we'll, we'll continue to work the issue.
It's been, it's been there.
We have a lot of common issues, and I think, I think, uh, the commissioners recognize that, um, it's a question of coinciding challenges.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that I've counted it, and I've been trying with each one of them individually. Uh, they cannot meet with two of them, it does core. So it's difficult for them to do it two of them at the same, same time. And so he is working on it there, kind of figure out the way for us to meet, and.
Five. It's seven years.
Been longer than that.
Seven years.
Okay, and last thing, um, the different American test, pick them steam. Uh, I've received a dozen or more requests for the reading of House America program. I'm sure you all received the request to read with the children as well. So if you have received a request, please respond, the kids only are in class. I went to South Shore, I went to your school twice in this ten week. The first one was by, with myself in school, or, um, remember I'm confident in talking about the city and like his dreams, they did secondary, did their own hip over air contest, it was beautiful. I gave each of us some carousel, like Lord carousel. And then the principal invited me back for their worst ceremony they had with parents. And first you, fifth grade kids, they had twenty questions, nothing. And they were fantastic, so the fourth and fifth graders, they took, um, the forms to be in the contest. And of course, the third and fourth and tenth, I think, why we do in the contest, but they were engaged, they, they want to be involved, and so I'm going to every school, you have been a principal with flyers, you have a go bear contest. Uh, I would, all the asking stuff, they usually help me store those data days and to read the S P A's and store the artwork of the kids to deny it. Uh, the city gives her, getting you all, so I will turn it over now to the meeting.
But I think, uh, I've covered everything, we, I need to cover, uh, Matt Harry just getting copies of that, uh, handout for you this.
Well, I would have one more request, Peter, if you can. Council members, can you reach out on the, to the, to the, the notes? You have one?
I'm not sure, uh, did we, were they named out recently? Because it says.
There's one of the guys, one person did it, but I didn't provide to have a copy.
What's all?
There's also a little bit, I'm going to have a hand.
We, yeah, we can, we can certainly get you one if you want, and they are, they're online.
I prefer hard copy.
Me too, of course. Um, you know that?
Yes, buddy.
And with that, um, our next meeting is, meeting dates are Monday, February twentieth at four P M for a work session. And then Wednesday, February twenty-second, six P M for, um, our city council meeting, and all of you that celebrate Valentine Day, both spend Monday, have fun, and, um, we'll have a journey.